I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming. Do we have any visitors wishing to speak? We do not. We have no visitors wishing to speak. We do have a policy committee update.
We had a policy committee meeting on December 4th. It was an additional meeting. We were supposed to meet again in January. Because there were so many policies to review, they added a second, a third meeting for us. So it was really pretty straightforward. There were no new policies. They're all revisions. And we worked a lot with Dr. Ill discussing the policies regarding the health and safety of the students and student athletes. And for instance, now putting in the term vaping as opposed to smoking, distinguishing from cigarette smoking. Talked about concussion protocol. And talked about, just kind of reviewed the type of apparatus that students that may have allergies can keep at the nurse's office or not. So again, it was pretty straightforward. And that was the primary focus of the policy meeting.
Great. Thank you. With that, I guess we'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Thanks. I'm very excited to welcome Mr. Lewis and several members of the Smallwood Drive faculty here tonight to provide us with an update on the strategic plan and specifically the building action plan at Smallwood. Welcome everyone.
Thank you very much Superintendent Penella and the board. We are excited to be here tonight and we really appreciate this opportunity. But the board remembers Mr. Prosser and I at your October retreat shared our strategic plan in fairly great detail. Tonight, we're even more excited because we take that plan and our intent is to make it come alive for all of you. So just to get started, just to lay a little bit of a foundation, if you will. What you see here is a timeline for our work around our strategic plan this school year. So we have a total of 22 meetings, I believe, scheduled. And if you notice, they're connected to all of our stakeholder groups. So we have meetings with our PTAs. We have meetings with our faculty. We have meetings with our support staff. And we have our own strategic planning team meetings as well. And it's really important that everyone is connected to our plan, understands our plan, has the opportunity to ask questions and have responses to those questions as well. Input is valued and I'm happy to say that those who are connected to our Smallwood community feel connected to our plan and support it in its entirety. Those meetings really help. Those touchpoints allow for that connectivity. And in addition to that, our plan really does drive the decisions that we make at the building level. It's very active and viable and certainly alive and gives us great guidance. And it also helps ensure that we're all on the same page and rowing in the same direction, if you will. I just wanted to take a moment to thank our exceptional team. You can see on the left is our list of teachers. On that column, I just want to point out that these teachers re-upped, if you will, they committed to a second year on our team. And I think that's a testimony to their commitment and their belief in the process as well as in terms of the fact that they're seeing progress and implementation within the building as a direct result of the plan. Up on the right-hand column, we had additional support at our summer retreat, which was held in July. These folks joined us. They're not on our team but have certain expertise and an interest and lended their viewpoint in the creation of our plan. And our plan was just draft, if you remember, until we brought it back to our various respective groups. Our stakeholder groups received input, massaged it, if you will, made adjustments, and then finalized that plan before we communicated it out. Parents are an integral part of our committee as well. You see Jess's name. Jess has been involved in out for two years, but even before that on the district team when the district as a whole embraced the strategic planning process under Superintendent Penella's leadership. And then Jess was on the Smallwood leadership team prior to that. So she's seen the progression and the impact, the direct impact of the plan. So our plan this year was created based on three different areas. And these are in no particular order. I'll start with the lower right-hand corner. You'll see that we use the district's 2018-19 strategic plan as one of our drivers. It was important that the decisions that we made in the building were in direct alignment with the district plan. We wanted to support the district as a whole. We're one district. And you'll see the same is true of all of our other buildings in the district. But that gave us that initial guidance and drive. At the top, you'll see a continuation of our strategies and initiatives from last year's plan. We had many successful initiatives that came to be. And we wanted to continue those successful initiatives and in many cases actually take them to a higher level. So they were extended, if you will, and enhanced. Then on the left, the faculty and staff feedback. One of the things that's really important to us is really listening to the folks that we work with. Not only our teachers, but our support staff. And it's important that we get their feedback as we chart our future and as we move forward. So that feedback really came into play as we looked at our initiatives within our plan. I just want to point out that in education, there's so much research and so many topics. And it comes at you sometimes at a really fast level. And it's very easy to fall in the trap of those quick-hit professional development topics, those flavor of the months, if you will. And that's something that we consciously avoid. We don't want to just do something because it's the latest and greatest. We want to do something for many different reasons. One, because it's research-based, that it supports best practices in our field of education, and that also meets the needs of our faculty and staff. And as we're training our teachers and developing them, we're providing parallel training to our support staff as well. So we're all learning and growing. And all of our folks can take that new learning back into the classroom and apply it working with children. Just a few pictures. We thought this would be a fun slide. Here's some pictures of our strategic action plan at work. Some from our summer retreat. You'll see many of the faces in the room tonight. Some from our opening day meetings during superintendent's conference days. Some from faculty meetings. Some from future, you know, from the beginning of the year of professional development to this present point in time. Our teachers are actively engaged. They embrace the work and they're very supportive of it, knowing that the end result is good for our building and it's good for our Smallwood community. We took the feedback from all of our retreat participants and we had, if I remember correctly, 26, 27. And that feedback's so important because at Smallwood, we embrace a cycle of continuous improvement. And this feedback really helps us adjust as we move forward and making sure that we're meeting the needs of everyone and we're doing it in a very thoughtful, very proactive way. So I won't read all of these to you. And these are just snippets from, of course, much more lengthier feedback. But they attach to the importance of parental input. They talk about having a voice in the process and that's so important for that buy-in and that support. The excitement about what's happening in our school as a result of all of these initiatives. The focus of our groups, the productivity of our work together, not only during our summer retreat, but during our team meetings throughout the year. And then just that last one, I am going to read that one. I love being a part of a team that makes such a positive and meaningful impact on our school. So that's the sentiment and the flavor of people's attitudes towards the process and how well it's been embraced. So tonight, to set the stage for what you'll see, I'm happy to share that we'll be taking a look at the three priorities of the district that you'll find in the district's plan as well as in each of the building's strategic plan. They're pillars, if you will. The first is learning and achievement. The second is student life, and the third is Amherst pride. And you'll notice that all of those pillars are upholding the Amherst model of tradition, of pride, and of achievement. And on the bottom, you'll see is the foundation. Those are the samples. We would love to show you every single thing that we've been doing because we're so excited and so passionate about it. But that would be impossible in one single board meeting. So we lifted or highlighted one in each. So in learning and achievement, you'll hear about our all-school project and all that that entails. Under student life, you'll be hearing about our mindfulness initiative, which is new this year. And under Amherst pride, you'll be hearing about our Smallwood Tech TV, which is greatly enhanced this year from previous years. So that first pillar or that first priority of learning and achievement, we'll be talking about our all-school project. And that all-school project really is the culmination of these three areas on the bottom. The first is STEAM. Many of you will remember that that stands for science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. The other is project-based learning. You'll hear more about that this evening. And tech integration. We're absolutely thrilled that Donna's role has shifted a little bit. And Donna's spending more time in the building. In the past, she used to come in and work with students, which is a great thing. But now she's working hand-in-hand with the teachers and with support from Dr. Shanahan. And it's been a nice shift or a tweak, if you will. And so our teachers, and in some cases, Mr. Prosser and I are learning hand-in-hand with Donna. And we're able to take that new learning around technology and bring it back to the classroom. So with that, I would like to introduce Mrs. Unger, who's our library media specialist, Mrs. Walter, who's our enrichment teacher, and Mrs. Freymeyer, who is our technology integrator. And just one last point I'd like to make before they begin their part of the presentation is we're using this approach as a bridge to the implementation of the next-generation science standards under the thoughtful guidance of Dr. Shanahan as well as the elementary science curriculum committee. Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. And thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity to speak to you about our all-school project. A little bit about our all-school project. It's a tradition that's held every other year at Smallwood. And all grades K through 5 contribute in some meaningful way. They participate, they contribute, they present. And prior year's topics have included such things as Earth Day and Career Day. And in 2017, we had a STEAM day. So as Mr. Lewis was discussing, let's get that right here. He was discussing STEAM. And last year, we had the introduction of STEAM Mondays, which was very successful. And it created a wonderful opportunity for Pat DeJacomo, our former enrichment teacher who's now retired, and myself to work with all students K through 5 to create those wonderful extension opportunities beyond the classroom. And with that, all K through 5 classes met on a regular basis with us. And they explored and engaged in different types of STEAM activities such as coding, doing some engineering-type things. So this year, I'm excited to share that our all-school project's going to be held on May 17, 2019. And it's going to combine the elements of digital citizenship, information literacy, and STEAM in an exciting way to enhance and extend our opportunities, our learning opportunities, for our students. So some of the things to talk about with STEAM is what the benefits are for our students. So creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking are very important 21st-century skills that we want all of our students to have. And they are essential to the STEAM learning process. Additionally, students are encouraged to explore those STEAM fields in engineering and science, and it also deepens their appreciation for the arts. So next, I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Amanda Walter and Mrs. Freymeyer. They're going to talk a little bit more about PBL, which is going to be a term they're going to hear, and STEAM and how it fits within our model. All right. Project-based learning, or PBL, is simply learning by doing. Students engage in an extended project where they work in small groups to create a driving question. And they address real-world issues and also look at different complex questions. So they take these questions, and they're based on a topic. This year, our topic being digital citizenship. And they develop a project task. So when they're working on this project task, they're building on those 21st-century success skills, their critical thinking skills, and they're learning to communicate and collaborate with each other. We also use tech tools then as a platform to showcase what the students have learned during this project-based learning experience together. There's a lot of different connections that we can make within our New York State standards, both with our project-based learning experience and with the digital citizenship topic. So there's connections with the New York State English Language Arts Standards, the next-generation science standards, our school library standards, as well as our International Society for Technology and Education standards, which Mrs. Freymeyer is going to explain a little bit more about those connections.
Within the ISC standards, the technology standards, they're national standards that all school districts will be implementing into their curriculum. Within that, the second standard that we are following is the digital citizenship standard. And then underneath that, you can see that we have eight component substandards underneath digital citizenship. Similar to what we used to do back in the day with character traits, this is digital citizen. So we're creating more aware students in a digital world. Obviously, it's a little bit different than when we were in school. Our first icon is internet safety. This is to make an awareness for our students as far as what information to share, what information not to share. We also have privacy and security, making sure our students are aware of... Very similar to our first one. But the second one, we want to make sure that our students are reporting things that they see that might come up, things that, again, we did not experience when we were younger. The next one is information literacy. This is to be able to differentiate and know what available resources versus fake news or sources and sites that might not be valid information. Creative comments and copyright, making sure that our students aren't just copying and pasting from resources when they're doing research. The next one is student identity and peer-to-peer relationships. We want to make sure that students are kindly thoughtful when they're using technology. Communication, obviously, making sure that our students are communicating effectively while using technology. And our second to last is cyberbullying. And you'll hear about this a little bit more about some of the projects that our students are doing. And last but not least, the digital footprint. What are the students creating? What is the digital image that they're creating as they're developing and growing into young adults to make sure that the choices they make as they're younger do not affect them as a culture?
At our strategic planning retreat this summer that Mr. Lewis had mentioned previously, myself, Mr. Lewis, and Mrs. Unger sat down with teacher representatives from each grade level to take a look at the digital citizen topics and kind of feel out which one would be best and most appropriate for each grade level. So we have those listed here for K through 5. We've had the opportunity to work with students in both 4th and 5th grade so far, and we're finishing up with 3rd grade this week. Just to give you an example of what a driving question might look like for our 4th grade for their relationships and communication, they came up with a question of how can Smallwood students learn to balance online screen time? And then they went through the steps of creating the project task and using the different tech tools. And for our 5th grade students for cyberbullying, they came up with questions such as how can Smallwood students help victims of cyberbullying?
Throughout the project that Mrs. Unger and Mrs. Walter are completing, everything is organized and structured through the Google Classroom. So each grade level, the resources, the materials that they're using with the students, as well as the classroom teacher, is all housed in the Google Classroom. Students are also exposed to a variety of different resources that they can create digital products with. Animoto is used to create quick, short video trailers or book trailers, if you will. Our 4th grade students have completed a Google Slide presentation regarding their online screen time. And our 5th grade students were very excited to use the new video production studio that's in the Smallwood library to create their videos to help support their peers with identifying ways and how to receive support for anybody who's been a victim of cyberbullying.
We have a tutorial, a testimonial from Mrs. Lisa Bartlett, just kind of giving you some insight of her experience in the classroom and what she entered her student's pocket.
Hi, I'm Lisa Bartlett at Smallwood. And my 4th graders just finished the PBL STEAM sessions in the library with Mrs. Unger, Mrs. Walter, and Mrs. Freymeyer. I had a lot of questions going into this session. What would it look like outside of the classroom? What would it take off of my plate? What kind of technology pieces would be used? And it was a huge success. My kids had a great time. They collaborated, worked on being digital citizens. Their final presentations and projects were outstanding. They created forms and Google Docs and even a video presentation that they're super excited to share at the upcoming day. And overall, it was just a huge success. It took things off of my plate. It addressed a lot of the technology standards. And the girls did a wonderful job. And the kids absolutely loved it and practiced a lot of different skills.
Thank you for the opportunity to highlight all the wonderful things that are going on in our school. Our next priority is student life. Smallwood has had a long history of supporting students' social, emotional, and mental health and wellbeing. The Mindful Initiative continues that support and provides teachers with tools to help all students. This evening, we have members of our mindfulness committee with us that will share about the many exciting action steps connected to our mindfulness initiative. Mrs. Noe is our school's social worker. Mrs. Sowers is a 5th grade special education teacher. And Mrs. Brinkley teaches 4th grade.
So what is mindfulness? It's a moment-to-moment of one's experiences without any judgment. It's ability to be fully present. It's an awareness of where we are and what we're doing. What's really important is that anyone can learn mindfulness.
There's also significant brain research to support the use of mindfulness in schools. Mindfulness techniques impact three areas of the brain and their functioning. And there's a timeframe in which if students are able to recognize when they start to experience strong emotions and feelings and use strategies to calm down, then they're actually gaining instructional time in the classroom. And that's what this slide here shows. Research shows that if students are able to recognize when they start to experience strong emotions and feelings and have tools and strategies to calm themselves down, then it takes approximately 90 seconds for those students to return to a typical state. If students are unable to recognize when they start to feel these emotions and don't use tools or strategies to calm down, then they can have an episode that takes approximately 27 minutes to get them returned to a typical state. So clearly, looking at this slide, we'd rather have kids take 90 seconds to calm down and use strategies and be ready to learn rather than missing 27 minutes of missed instructional time. And that's been our whole goal for mindfulness, is to give teachers and students a variety of tools so that students can be in the right mindset for learning. And these are some of the tools we'll show you today.
One of the many tools that we're using this year is called the Tiger Breath. It's a way to help students to be mindful of how they're feeling, to calm down. Tiger breaths are really simple and are really easy to implement in any situation throughout the school day, which is one of the reasons why we really like them. All of our students at Smallwood have been taught how to do the Tiger Breath. And it's really become part of the culture and climate of our school. So I'd like to take a minute to teach you a Tiger Breath. So I hope that you'll do one with me. I'll go ahead and model it, and then hopefully you'll join me in learning our Tiger Breath that we're using. So when you take Tiger Breath, I always instruct students that if they're sitting in a chair, to have both their feet on the floor, their back straight, and their hand on their belly so that they can really feel their belly moving in and out to ensure that you're really taking deep breaths. So when you take a Tiger Breath, you're going to breathe in slowly and then breathe out. So just breathe in and then breathe out. And sometimes students need more than one. So if you can go ahead and do that with me, you're going to put your hand on your belly and breathe in and breathe out. So there are times when students just need one. And there's times when students need a few to really get themselves to calm down and really work through that first 90 seconds so that they can return to a typical state. One of the things that we really love is that we use this whole school and all of our morning announcements. So the entire school is taking a Tiger Breath together to start our day. It really normalizes this and is really teaching kids to make sure that they use it and they're comfortable using it, and it's practice. We use it individually with students. So it's easy to really implement if they're just... If they forgot their homework, or their lunch, or their instrument, or just typical things that can happen in an elementary school and cause some stress, if there's any sort of peer conflict or problems, and as well as if any students are exhibiting any anxious feelings. And we also, one of the things that teachers have really loved is that this is easily implemented whole class. So oftentimes, I notice teachers doing these before a test, during transitions, after lunch, or after a special. One of the things I often see too is teachers using them before walking through the hallways. And of course, after fire drills or any sort of situation where they might think they need a Tiger Breath to really calm themselves and get ready to learn.
So another tool connected to the mindfulness initiative is the pause box. Every staff member in the school made one at the end of the year. Our committee modeled it and they made it with us. All the students are very familiar. They're in the cafeteria, the gym, the music room, and all of the classrooms. And this is another time where the students, if they're feeling nervous, or anxious, or maybe sad, they might go use this pause box for 90 seconds so that they can calm down and get back to that normal state. So just to show you some of these items in the pause box, I brought it along. There's a timer so that when the kids go over to this, they know they have 90 seconds. The kids know this isn't a punishment. It's the same in every classroom and they know what to look for. So they have 90 seconds. And these touch on all sensory aspects of mindfulness. So there's a stress ball that they can squeeze. There's a pinwheel that they can practice their tiger breathing with. There's also a glitter jar for them to look at. This one's a little frozen. It was in my car. There we go. And there's also markers and coloring sheets for them to use as well. So we've heard a lot of great feedback about the pause box and Tiger Breath. Teachers and staff members have approached us saying that this box was magical. Kids knew that they could go there for 90 seconds and were ready really to come back and learn for the rest of that lesson. Teachers are really enjoying their Tiger Breath. A lot of them start them before they enter the hallway. So we've heard great, positive things about the Tiger Breath and tiger breathing.
Thank you, Mrs. Brinkley. Another tool that we provided our faculty and staff with is a series of videos that show the mindfulness techniques in action. One benefit of the mindfulness playlist is that teachers can access the videos through our new SDS YouTube channel. The videos can be played at the start of the day, during transitions, and have been a big hit with all of the students. One of the stars of the video is a puppet that Mrs. Noe supports throughout several different emotions he has at Smallwood. Let's meet Rory.
Hi Rory, how are you today?
Hey, Mrs. Noe.
Oh, you seem a little sad. What happened?
I'm having a bad day.
Oh, do you want to tell me about it?
I guess. I wasn't following the teacher's directions.
Oh, well, do you remember the other day when we practiced our Tiger Breath?
Yeah, I do.
I have another little exercise that might help you to remember directions. And you know, maybe your teacher can use this in between things before she gives you directions, so she makes sure your brain is ready to listen. Do you want to try it?
Yeah, if you think it would help, because I feel bad.
I think it might. Have you ever been on a roller coaster, Rory?
I have been on a roller coaster, yeah.
Not surprising. I thought you would have said no. Well, I have a little trick that might help, okay? So what we're going to do, and boys and girls at Smallwood, you can do this together with us. We're going to put your hands up, okay? And we're going to pretend that each finger is one of the turns of a roller coaster, okay? And what we're going to do is when you go up the roller coaster, you're going to breathe in. And when you go down, you're going to breathe out, okay? So this hand is going to pretend, your one finger's going to pretend that it's like the car of the roller coaster. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, so we're going to go up. What do you think?
I'm actually feeling better.
And now your brain is ready to focus in on your teacher's words and their directions. And next time, hopefully, your brain will be ready to remember those directions and you'll make a good choice.
Thanks for helping me out today, Mrs. Noe.
No problem.
You're the best.
You too, Rory.
It's a really hard act to follow. No, Mr. Prosser's cousin. So mindfulness isn't just for the wellbeing of students, but all staff at Smallwood. In August, at our superintendent's conference day, we read a book about Is She the Rock Who Chooses to be Happy and Kind? And then all faculty and staff at Smallwood received a rock and they drew a face that represented a positive mindset on the rock. And they took that rock back to their classrooms as a visual reminder of the message of that day. We've also started mindfulness Mondays where our school social worker, Mrs. Noe, our school psychologist, Mrs. Cleary, send out a writing prompt. And then teachers have time during the day to write in their mindfulness journal and just reflect on that prompt. And finally, we have the Rock Star of the Month Award, which is awarded to a staff member at Smallwood which is awarded to a staff member at Smallwood who builds on the great foundation of Smallwood. And this recipient has also contributed positively to the social and emotional well-being within our Smallwood community.
Thanks, Mrs. Sowers. Our next... Our next priority is Amherst Pride. One of the highlights from our Amherst Pride pillar is our new Smallwood Drive Television Studio, following in the footsteps of our other schools in the district. This year, Smallwood has launched its very own SDS Tech TV. Let's watch a highlight video from past episodes of our Friday morning announcements that highlight all of the wonderful things that are going on at Smallwood.
Okay, so in conclusion, we are hopeful that our presentation provided greater insight, not only into the several of our initiatives, certainly not all of them, but the highlight video helps provide that insight as well, as we carry out our work every single day, focusing on providing the highest quality of education to the whole child in all aspects of their development. So with that, I would like to, on behalf of our presenters and on behalf of our Smallwood faculty and staff, thank the board for your continued support. It's something that we recognize and do feel quite strongly in the building. It does help make our work that much easier. A special thank you to Superintendent Penella, who is always and constantly supportive, as well as the other central office staff, who embrace our work, and we work hand in hand to make good things happen for the children of our district. So thank you again, and at this point, I'd like to open up for any questions.
We gotta copyright the Tiger Breath and mass market it across.
You just gave us a great idea. It'll be a little easier to come out.
Rory doing public appearances for Lori Cash.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, both of you, for your leadership at Smallwood. I'd also like to thank our teachers and most social worker, library media specialists, I use the term broadly, teachers, for being here. I know you prepared tremendously for this. It's obvious based on the way you presented tonight. And this is a very hectic time of year, both in our personal lives and at school, with the holidays approaching. All the kids have visions of sugar plums dancing in their heads. So thank you for being here, thank you for preparing. Your expertise is quite impressive, but what's more impressive is what you do every day in the classroom with our kids. And I get to see that quite regularly, so thank you for everything you do. I hope you all have a great holiday season and a Happy New Year. Thanks. So we have a brief transition, if you'd like to take a quick Tiger Breath. Mrs. Wazinski is going to, who's filling in for Mrs. Costetti, transition over to the podium where she'll put her hat on as our school business official to provide us with our first of many budget updates.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So this is our first presentation for Budget Development for the nineteen-twenty school year. So we will move forward, and we'll look at our revenue assumptions and projections, our expenditures, our overall budget forecast, do a little summary, and then answer any questions that you might have. This is the same format we used this past year, so it should look familiar to you. I do want to start out by just reminding everyone, as this is our... As this is our first presentation for this fiscal year for the budget presentation, almost everything is an estimate. There are very few numbers that we actually know, so we will expect to see some changes. We'll have our next presentation in February, and we'll have a little bit more information at that point. But we really don't have final numbers until we are looking to adopt in April. So our property tax levy is one of our largest sources of revenue, along with our state aid. CPI is currently trending above two percent, so we do anticipate our CPI to be a two percent increase this year as one of the parts of our tax cap calculation.
And that's the max, right?
That's the max it can be. So often, you may hear about the two percent tax cap. The two percent's really only one piece of it. It's two percent of CPI or less, whichever is highest. So if CPI is two point three percent, as it's currently trending, we're not allowed to use more than two point oh. Our growth factor is...
I'm sorry, just because that can be a confusing component, 'cause it's not listed there. You will see in the snapshot of the revenue that the levy is estimated at this point using a CPI of two point oh at three point six one. That was three point six one.
So our overall tax cap calculation uses many different pieces. One of the biggest is our capital exclusion, and we will talk about that a little later. Our tax-based growth factor is one point zero zero two one, which means that the growth in the town of Amherst is less than a quarter percent, which is where that goes in. So in areas where there's a lot of new building and new growth that helped support your tax levy, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of that in our area. Our capital exclusion also factors into our tax cap calculation. And the exclusion is the difference between the debt service payments that we will make next year and the state aid that we will receive to offset that. We're allowed to add that into our tax levy, because those expenditures were approved by the voters when they approved our capital project votes in the past. We used state aid projections using the November state aid runs. Those are the initial projections, and we will see updated projections at the end of January, when the governor's budget is released, and then again in April, when the budget is adopted.
Yeah, there was some reason for optimism relative to the November election, and how that may affect state aid. But as you know, that is always a changing picture. And yesterday, that picture became a little cloudy, cloudier, when the governor, you may have seen, he made headlines with his support for legalizing recreational marijuana in the state of New York. But what he also said at that meeting with the New York Bar Association was that he doesn't believe more money is needed for schools. He believes that schools need to, the money needs to be distributed more equitably, and the poorer schools need to receive more money. So that is the narrative that was put out there as our first sneak peek at where the governor may be with his projections in January. Fortunately, the State Education Department and the Board of Regents has provided the politicians with an estimate of two point one billion new dollars for education, where they're calling for one point six of that to go towards the Foundation Aid Formula. So there's some early political bantering going back and forth, because in response to the Foundation Aid Formula, the governor referred to it as ghosts from the past. So that's often been the piece that educators and board members and the folks in state ed have looked to get Foundation Aid fully funded. And now, it appears as though the governor is referring to it as a ghost from the past and a political ploy. So right now, the initial estimates, just to underscore Mrs. Wazinski's point, are very preliminary.
Our miscellaneous revenues are projected to decrease a little bit, and there are a couple different factors involved in that that net against each other. With the changes in our after-school programming and moving to JFK, we're no longer bringing in that revenue that we would have for the after-school program. But on the flip side, we have a decrease on the expenditure side of the salaries as well, and now that that has shifted to our new after-school program. We have an increase in pilot payments, which are businesses who have agreements with the town to pay a reduced tax rate as they're building. So we have a new pilot coming on the books. And we also have made some corrections in our extracurricular funds. So over the, in the past couple years, we've had some comments in our audit for our extracurricular funds, because we had them at the elementary level. And extracurricular funds are truly supposed to be only student monies, student-owned monies in grades six through twelve. We did have some that were supporting some activities in both elementary schools. And the middle school and high school principal funds also existed for some additional support in those students, for those student activities. We are continuing those activities, and we're supporting those activities, but now we're doing it through general fund. So we'll see an increase on the revenue side, as the revenues that they would've brought in will now be brought into general fund. And there's a corresponding increase on the expenditure side, because then those funds are used to support those activities. And then transfers. So currently, we have sixty thousand dollars in, as a transfer from our tax cert reserve, and that will only be utilized if we actually have expenditures in that corresponding expenditure code. So our revenue projections, as Mr. Penella mentioned, our property tax levy with our capital exclusion is three point six one percent. Again, this isn't final, it won't be final until the end of February, and we will submit it to the state by March first. And this is currently calculated our maximum, and we have the ability to set that at whatever the board decides they would like to set it at. Our state aid, including building aid, with our November projections, is increasing about two point three percent. We hope that that will increase as we get our next runs in January and April. Pilots, community education, that is the area that had the revenue for our after-school program, which is why you're seeing that decrease. And then the other revenues are somewhat minor, with the overall decrease of two percent. And then the transfers from the tax cert reserve, and the five hundred thousand of appropriated fund balance offsets a five hundred thousand dollar line on the expenditure side, our contingency line. It's a continuation of what we've had the past couple years. And it allows us to have a little bit more flexibility if we have an unforeseen expenditure, but we support it with fund balance, so that it doesn't affect our tax levy. Overall, that would leave us with a revenue budget of fifty-nine point four million, or just under one point five percent of an increase.
So one thing Mrs. Wazinski mentioned on the previous screen was that our... No, I actually need to go to the chart. The, our, one of the exclusions for our tax cap formula is the difference in our debt service payments versus our building aid. And we are going out to borrow eighteen million dollars in February for phase two of the capital project that began last summer. So we don't know, you know, what rate we're going to get, and whether or not we'll generate premiums to offset the first year's interest payment. So that could be something that factors into the formula, and may affect the levy number that you see there.
On the expenditure side, personnel, we have settled with most of our unions, and we have great conversations with the final one, with an overall increase in our expenditures at just over three percent, which equates to about nine hundred thousand dollars. Benefits, we do not have rates for ERS yet, so I kept those flat and used that figure. TRS is projected to be a rate of nine point five to nine point eight percent. Again, not final yet, so we used the higher end of the projection to be safe. Health insurance, we increased our expenditure budget two hundred thousand dollars, which is a three percent increase. We had a larger increase this past year, and we're knock on wood, doing pretty good so far this year. So we're hoping that that will be a conservative estimate, but be accurate enough that we don't need to go higher. But we'll work with Premier over the next couple months to firm up those projections.
And overall, you know, we had about a five hundred thousand dollar increase in health insurance from last year to this year, from roughly six point two million to six point seven million. We were under what Premier had recommended at six point eight million for the current year. So this recommendation is roughly six point nine million, or as Mrs. Wazinski said, a three percent increase. But it's important to note that, you know, we are trying to keep our employees' premiums at a certain cost for them, but in addition, you know, keep our overall expenditures from increasing too drastically, as we've seen a few unhealthy years, and some big increases over the past few years. So trends would indicate that we're due for a good year, and we're hoping that's on the horizon. But we think we have a conservative estimate at three percent this year. But I wanted it to be noted that we are a hundred thousand dollars below what Premier recommended to us. But last year, Premier recommended that we were eight percent below their recommendation, and that they were recommending a nine percent increase for the following year. So that would've been, you know, a seventeen percent increase in less than twelve months' time, and we didn't think that that was appropriate or necessary. But it's certainly something to keep an eye on, because as a self-funded school district, we have to, you know, pay the claims that we get. We don't just pay the insurance premium for our employees. And keeping an eye on those claims is something that they do monthly. So as Mrs. Wazinski said, we're trending in the right direction this year, but it's been a rough couple years.
General support has a four percent projection for an increase, and it is mostly due to our utilities, based on how they're trending this year and the addition of our SRO. We are hoping to have the SRO in place this year, but that fee will be offset by some decreases in other line, where we had some funds allocated that we were able to reappropriate for this expense. We will continue our hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project and the five hundred thousand dollar contingency line. On the instruction side, we're looking at a six percent increase in expenditures. And some of that is due to the expenditures in the principals' fund, which are then supported by the revenues. Last year, we had a decrease in our special ed budget, because we had a high-cost, high-needs student with high costs move out of the district. And two months later, another student with very similar needs moved in. So we needed to increase those lines this year in the current budget, but we wanna make sure that we're planning for the continuation of that student's programming for next year as well. And finally, we added thirty-five thousand dollars into our technology line for state aid hardware. The state allows you to spend up to thirty-five thousand dollars a year on security, such as security cameras, and then you get reimbursed for that in full the following year. So instead of taking money away from our other lines that we do have allocated for different replacement items, we added the thirty-five thousand, knowing that we'll get it in aid the following year.
I just wanted to say thank you again to the supervisor of the town. You know, we've often talked about wanting a school resource officer in the district, and those conversations intensified last spring. And the cost had always been a concern, as you all well know. And the town, the town's willingness to pay over sixty percent of the cost of an officer is what's made it possible for us to add this significant security enhancement to our district. And again, Mrs. Wazinski highlights that, you know, we had multiple retirements that took place after the school year started that we didn't know about last April when we put the budget together. We also had some consulting fees set aside in the curriculum budget that were able to be reallocated, because they were for a person that we hired, in Dr. Shanahan, so...
In our BOSI's budget, we have a seventy-five thousand dollars increase, and that's due to changes in programming that actually happened this year. But we did increase the remainder of the lines two percent, and that's an estimate. We have a participation meeting with BOSI's on February sixth, and a whole team of us get together, and we go through our BOSI's line by line by line. And we look at our projections for student placement, our needs for an alternative education that we have for our students. And we sit down together, and we develop that budget. So we'll have that updated for you in the February presentation. And we sit down together and we develop that budget. So, we'll have that updated for you in the February presentation. Our transportation contract is still in place with a 1.5% annual increase. We also added a little bit of money to our fuel line. Part of our contract requires us to pay for the $30,000 worth of fuel and gas prices are a little higher this year than they were last year. So, we added a little money to that line. And one thing we did add to the transportation was just under $10,000 for elementary after-school transportation. So, it was brought up last year and again, at the beginning of this year is a need for our elementary schools to have after-school transportation so that they can participate and engage in more extracurricular activities. We didn't have transportation available to them, so we did add those funds. These are estimates, but if we're able to leave that in the budget, that'll be an enhancement to both buildings a couple of days a week to be able to add some more after-school activities for our 5 kids.
Yeah, one of the things that was communicated to me early on in my position and in my role in this position was that, you know, they used to have elementary after-school buses and one of the things it was utilized for was whole group, you know, band orchestra chorus rehearsals, which then, when that was cut from the budget, was pushed into the school day. So, our hope is that if this remains in the budget for next year, and this is really a program continuation budget, but there are a couple enhancements that Mrs. Wazinski has highlighted that are small amounts, the $9,800. But our hope is we can leave that in there, that we can help maximize the instructional time during the school day for our elementary students and teachers by adding those two buses. And it was something I had heard about for a couple of years after taking over this position. And as Mrs. Wazinski looked into it, we thought the cost and the subsequent savings by not having it didn't really outweigh what you gain by having it in terms of your instructional day. So, we felt like the expenditure was much, was well worth the $9,800 for what you gain in maximizing that instructional time and being able to add extracurriculars for kids at the building.
And it's also an adable expense. Our transportation expenses are cost-driven aid expenses. So, that will increase our transportation expenditure, which will correspondingly increase our transportation aid the following year. And our debt service, we are looking at about $700,000 increase due to payments for our current capital project. So, here are expenditure projections, just over 3% for personnel, which is about $900,000. 2% for benefits and the majority of that is our health insurance increase with some minor changes in ERS and TRS based on those projected rates. 4% for general support, 6% for instruction, a small decrease in BOSI's, small increase in transportation, debt service. Overall, it leaves us with a $60 million budget, 60.7 million budget, which is a 2.2% increase in spending. So, at first glance, when we looked at that, we thought that that was a little high, 3.7%. It seemed like a large increase in expenditures. But when you look at the causes of that increase, $900,000 of it is contractual for salary, $200,000 of it is benefits and health insurance, and $700,000 of it is for debt service. So, we have very little control over those three items. When you take those three out, you're left with about $400,000 of an increase across all the other areas. Again, those are estimates and we'll firm those up as we go through this season. So, our overall budget forecast leaves us with $59.4 million in revenues and $60.7 million in expenditures, which is a $1.3 million gap. So, last year at this time, our gap was about 2.1 million. So, we're definitely trending in the right direction. We still have a little bit of work to do. But again, they're very conservative estimates on both the revenue and the expenditure side, so we will continue to tweak those. Mr. Penella will have meetings with all of the administrators throughout the month of January and we'll look at each individual budget for the buildings and the departments and make sure that we're focusing our dollars into a direction that not only supports our staff and our students, but also our strategic plan. 1.5 million dollars, or I'm sorry, 1.5% for an increase in revenues. Update in state aid runs coming in January and April. 2.2 million in expenditures or 3.7%, mostly due to personnel benefits and our debt service payments. A $1.3 million gap, which does include $500,000 in fund balance, but that's offset by the contingency line. And some of the areas that we have to look at to close our gap are the same areas that we had last year to look at. Increases in state aid, any salary breakage from retirements from any of our groups, possible spending reductions, plugging that hole with some more fund balance, possibly increasing our tax levy or appropriating from our reserves. Last year, we had an additional $200,000 appropriated from our EBLR. We didn't include that at this time, but that might be something that we want to look at later as well.
Yeah, so, as, as a summary of the current year's budget, we have about 1.2 million of fund balance and reserves supporting our revenue this year, which we don't intend to spend. So, that means we're actively managing the budget and trying to end the year with anywhere, you know, with 1.2 to $2 million in, in the end of the year because as you've seen with our increases in debt service, you know, we have an aging high school that needs a significant amount of work in addition to what, the 20 million that will windo it over the next three years. This building has reached historical status, which is no badge of honor. It just makes it more difficult to do renovations to it. But as we continue to try to make improvements to our facilities, one of the things we need to keep an eye on is trying to offset the burden on the taxpayers. So, the state covers roughly 70 to 75% of reconstruction costs and we, leaving us with about a 4 to 1 ratio for construction to local share. So, for every $4 million we spend in construction, it's about a million dollars that is on the taxpayers. Or one goal that I have would be to build our capital reserve to try to offset that local share for the taxpayers. So, ending the year with a balance of anywhere to $1 to $2 million would enable us to not spend the 1.2 million dollars that's appropriated from our fund balance and reserves, which is our most significant goal. Then anything beyond that, we would have a discussion in June as to what reserves we would look to either replenish or fund because currently, our capital reserve has a limit of $500,000, but the balance is zero. So, that's one of the things that we want to keep an eye on, knowing that our facilities continue to need upgrades as we move forward and they age or they continue to age. So, it's quite a conservative approach, I think, that we have for the first meeting. But as Mrs. Wazinski mentioned, this presentation last year had a 2.1 million dollar gap. So, I think her, she's starting to get her stamped fully on the budget. She has all of the codes coded the way that she likes and the way that the law dictates, quite frankly. Her and Mrs. Williams in the business office are doing a very nice job managing the budget. So, I'm optimistic that we will see that gap close and we'll achieve our goals as we look to not spend the fund balance in this year's budget.
Any questions?
Okay, I think we're on to new business.
All right. We'll need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items, 1A through L, 2A through C, and 3B, C, D, E, G, and H. Please say aye.
I have a second. Any discussions? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through L, 2A through C, and 3D, C, D, E, G, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mrs. Wazinski, I don't believe we have any follow-ups, Ms. Wazinski? We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding contract negotiations with the Amherst Personnel Association.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.